Right here is now five thirty, April sixteen, two thousand and nineteen. We will cause an order to City Council meeting for the City of Statesboro, Georgia. We have our implication and pledge of belief as my councilman Sam Jones.
Thank you Mayor. That's great. We invite the Treaty of the University to this place. This place that we call the Statesboro Council Chambers. We know that you're always here, but we just want to say you're here and you're welcome. As we sit here and we sit here together and we prepare to make decisions to serve citizens of Statesboro, our guests, our staff, all our employees. We know as we reason together, and we need you. We ask for peace, courage, and wisdom to make decisions to go forward to serve all our citizens of Statesboro. Get together, all God children, say it. Amen.
Resolutions to the Act of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the Proclamation recognizing Georgia Cities Week. Um, when it be in Georgia Cities Week, we'll, we'll read the proclamation as, as the following. A proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Statesboro, Georgia, Georgia Cities Week, April twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas, city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas, city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment to an understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas, city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas, City, Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas, this week offers an important opportunity to spread the words of all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas, the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government from a variety of different projects and information. And whereas, Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government who is civic involved. Now, therefore, be resolved that the City of Statesboro declares April twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, as Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Statesboro encourages all citizens, government officials, and employees to recognize this week as Georgia Cities Week, passed and adopted by the City of Statesboro this sixteenth day of April, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you. We'll move down to Agenda Item Four. Ms. Lynn, is there anyone here for public comments?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move down to Agenda Item Five, which is the consideration of a motion to approve the considered agenda, uh, which includes approval of minutes from three twenty-nine called council minutes, three twenty-nine called executive session minutes. Um, April second, council minutes, four two executive session minutes, and four or five budget retreat minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure do, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, let it show that Agenda Item Five has passed. We will now move forward to Agenda Item Six. Uh, I am going to look to Kane and ask Kane, can we consolidate Six, Seven, and Eight for the same time?
Yes, Your Honor.
We on the wrong side of the street, right? Okay, uh, with that being said, um, uh, Agenda Item Six, Seven, Six, Seven, and Eight, uh, as the public is opening for public hearing in the first reading, a consideration of a motion to approve four of the twenty-nineteen Agenda Item Two, and orders in power in the Statesboro Works, um, the Youth Commission as well as the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, uh, to raise and expend funds in compliance with its mission statement. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure do.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right Kane, if you will, will you give us a little bit of insight into what are should be three items?
Yes, Mayor Council, uh, Six, Seven, and Eight regard, uh, the ability of, uh, Statesboro Works Commission, Statesboro Youth Commission, and Statesboro Commission on Diversity and Inclusion to raise and expend funds in compliance with their adopted mission statements. Um, there are three proposed ordinances, one for each, um, for each commissions. Uh, so I would just say the commission in general and the performance of its duties may with the approval of the Mayor Council cooperate with and accept funds from federal, state, or local public or semi-public agencies of private, private individuals or corporations. And may expend such funds for the purposes of the commission with the approval of Mayor Council. Any grants received will be done so pursuant to Resolution two thousand and twelve dash nineteen or any subsequently adopted grant policy of the City of Statesboro. And all purchases shall be made in accordance with the city's purchasing policy set out in Chapter Five of the Statesboro Academy of Order.
All right, um, is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to postpone the hearing? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any council discussion? Okay, all right, and so this is the first reading, so we need to come back to this.
That's correct, I'll bring it back in May seven.
All right, I've seen that there's no further discussion, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Agenda Item, Item Number Nine states the following. Consideration of a motion to approve a development agreement between the City of Statesboro and landowners regarding the construction and installation of public infrastructure within the old Registered Tax Allocation District. City will issue TAD revenue bonds or make alternative financing arrangements for four point seven five million dollars to reimburse landowners for installation of said infrastructure. Kane, will you give us some insight on that?
Mayor Council, this is the development agreement, this would be between the city and, uh, the landowners of the, um, old Registered TAD. And that, the landowners there are BDT Atkins LP and J Edward Atkins Farm LP. This development agreement would allow, um, would allow these, those two landowning parties to, um, go ahead and construct and install the public infrastructure in the old Registered TAD. Anyway, that would be, um, maybe that would be the improvements on old Register, the construction of Fort Minna Way, and also the utilities and infrastructure to go in. And the way this is structured is that upon, uh, the landowners spending two and a three-eighths, two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, then the city would reimburse the, um, the landowners for that, for those advances in construction and installation of the public infrastructure. Um, upon completion and service, uh, be rented a public infrastructure and also a hun- showing that about four million, four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's spent on the property, then the rest of it would be, um, would be made available to the developers slash, uh, landowners here in order reimbursement. And that, the, that would, the four and three-quarter million be the proceeds of either TAD bonds or other alternative financing. And those, uh, and the increment on the tax allocation district would pay for the, um, would pay for the interest and the principal on, uh, on the bonds until, until it was paid off. And in the alternative, it provides the city may, uh, may impose a special service district if there is a shortfall, which would be expected early on in, uh, in this project. And, um, and then Mr. Ben Castle is present and, and also Frank and Jason have worked closely with me on this. So, um, if you all have any questions, we're on here.
Thank you, is there any questions by council at this time?
That would be a tax overlay where the, um, the mileage rate would go up on that, on that particular parcel in order to pay for the special services that are only available in that district, which in this case would be servicing of that, um, of that bond or other financing arrangements. It would just be so the city would not suffer shortfall as, as a result of this development agreement.
Any further, any further questions by council?
Yeah Kane, um, you, you did say that the, uh, the bond would be issued or alternative, you're, you're suggesting that there might be bank loan or something along those lines?
That's correct, we're just not hamstrung that it has to be, um, those tax revenue bonds. If there's something, there's another financial financing arrangement that makes more sense in this case, the city would be free to pursue that, that avenue as well.
Cheaper?
Right, right. Because, uh, that, that amount of, the amount available for the, um, reimbursement of the advances is the four and seven hundred and fifty thousand. The only thing that would, um, the only thing that would lower that amount would be the high cost of the bond issuance of the, for the loan party, nothing else would reduce that amount available for reimbursement.
Kane, any further questions by council? I've seen that there, there is more?
And I was just, so I mentioned, I, I did, I did say this earlier, both developers have, both landowners, um, their managing, uh, partners have signed off on the agreement that was entered.
Thank you, Kane. All right, is there any further questions for council? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
No, 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 approved, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that Agenda Item Number Nine has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is consideration of a motion to reject all bids then concerning the purchase of a backhoe for use by the Stormwater Division of Public Works. This item is budgeted under, uh, capital improvement plan S T M dash twenty to be a amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Mayor, if you will.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, recently, we submitted, uh, solicited bid for a, uh, a backhoe for the Stormwater Department. Um, we've never come here asking to, uh, reject all bids, it's, it's allowed by our policy to reject any and all bids. The reasoning is, uh, it's not that the lowest bid did not meet its spec. The reasoning is, we weren't tight enough on specs and we ended up, through addendums, whittling it down where we ended up with a machine that's really not robust enough to do the job for long haul. Uh, just to make sure, we sent down three, uh, of the operators to test run the equipment and they, they came back and said, it's just, you know, almost not the heavy equipment that we needed. We did, uh, a more robust model. Uh, so, we're basically, as allowed by ordinance, we're asking to redo, uh, we, still we did, we signed. We'd like to make sure you watch.
All right, thank you, Mayor, are there any questions by council?
There are the same participants that would have bid on the other piece of equipment, bid on the new spec equipment.
It's my understanding that everybody has, uh, piece of equipment in their line that could qualify for increased bids. One of the issues was that, uh, you know, the operating room. Well, we weren't clear enough about, you know, include buckets and attachments. Our intent is the base model bids and motion to factory. And we weren't clear, we're admitting that, uh, we faced operating weight, not with attachments and whatnot. So, that was our error in what I asked you to do.
Any further questions by council? Seeing that there isn't, that there are no motions, we'll, uh, ask for consideration of to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very surely, Agenda Item Number, seeing it's passed, we'll move down to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Agenda Item Number Eleven states consideration of a motion to award contracts to silent watering solution incorporated in the amount of ninety-three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cent for two N C I double O Ori- Ori five pumps, the funds approved in the twenty-nineteen capital improvement budget. Item W W D dash three seven three.
Um, Mayor, Council, um, this is, uh, backup pumps to go at our sewer disstations. We use combination generators and backup pumps. Um, we like backup pumps, we know we back up everything, not just the power, we also back up mechanical failure. We just installed a really large one at a bird pond station. This is for two smaller ones to go at two smaller disstations. Our, we, we input a hundred thousand dollars in our budget every year for adding generators or pumps. And we actually, to be able to do two of them with the same money. So, uh, we're asking to purchase these to behave general services and installations of federal purchasing contract. There are no local vendors for these machines. Um, so we're asking to, uh, purchase them on food, food purchasing contract.
Is there any questions for council? All right, seeing that there is, that there are none, is there a motion to approve?
Sure do.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that Agenda Item Number Eleven has passed, we'll move down to Agenda Item Number Twelve. Consideration of a motion to award a contract to White Delta Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-six cent for the installation of approximately one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three feet of twelve foot, twelve foot sewer pipe, uh, and approve our C I P funds, W W D dash thirty-two. Twelve eight, sorry.
Yes, Mayor, this is the extension to Simulane Own Railroad, Bad Road, walking train. You know, we just, uh, completed phase one of that, which was where the crossfit, this property where CrossFit was built. This is the next piece of property where David Pierce built it, uh, New York South, South District. This will provide sewer to his, uh, piece of property and well extended onto the joint piece of property. Um, this is part of the city's master plant sewer. This is not internal to his project, this is just to provide the trunk lines and to get the trunk lines onto the next piece of property in there in the line. And, uh, we were, we got three good, we got really good bids, this is a great price, we're very pleased.
Thank you, is there any questions by council?
Mr. Mayor, uh, that, I wanted you to, uh, while discussing additions to the city sewer, uh, lines, that brings up the, uh, concern and question about the city sewer capacity. You and I talked about this, in fact, I asked you to update council on the city sewer system.
Um, yes, sir. What, what council, Duke's talking about is, uh, we have one of our main digesters, the aerator, breakdown at the treatment plant. And, uh, and we also have a pump that feeds the pumps out of those digestors breakdowns at the same time, which causes us to have the whole solids in our digestive longer than we want, which, and produces odors in this neighborhood. So, I sent him a text the other night, said, hey, you may, you may smell a little more than you normally do. And we get this stuff to probably fix and get this pump and get it out of the system and get back to normal. That's what we're referring to, it's just the fact that old equipment, it breaks down a lot. The aeration unit was not associated with that, that was actually the new one that we put in. The motor burned out on, so they had new, but the old pumps downstairs for what we couldn't pump with. So, we had to get those fixed, they got those back here this afternoon. So, they're working on getting that old sludge out of the system, but it may smell a little more for the basic things. And when you got an old plant, they're always going to have problems after that to crop up.
No, actually, what I was referring to is I wanted to probably start to understand how complex and costly this sewer system that we have in the City of Statesboro is. And the upcoming and planning for years for the growth of Statesboro that we're all hoping for and planning on allows us to plan for those expenses of, uh, renovation of the current plant farm or perhaps another facility. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to use this as a time to compliment our staff and personnel on the tremendous job they do out there at that particular facility. Having, having taught those people, not, it's a wonderful work environment as they make it, doing the hard job that has to be done. So, thank you, Steve, on behalf of us.
They do, they do a fantastic job out there back there. My client, he's out here, he was the one working trying to get that pump started back up. And they work, they work till they get it done. I mean, it's, it's, it's nasty hard work, but they do a decent job with that good staff. All of them, the maintenance operations, you know, all of them are fantastic. And what, one of the things I'm referring to is we brought it, the, the, uh, sometime in our, in, in the next ten to twelve years, and we better start planning sooner, you know, for major, major upgrades or a new treatment plant, all of which, you know, we talked about costing about six dollars a gallon. And we'd be looking at sixty to ninety million dollars for a total system upgrade. And that's just when we treat, I mean, that's not counting all the stuff we need to do in the field. We've, we've got some projects we're fixing, bring back to before reducing the I and I, which keeps the, keeps the rainwater out of the system. You don't, you don't, you want to treat sewers, you don't want to treat rainwater, that's your treatment plant. So, it's, it's expensive and it's complex and it takes a really, really good training before you start to keep it going in the long run.
Thank you, Steve. All right, so please note that we all pray for what you and your team does.
Okay, why do you think so, Matt, if you're there? Yeah, nobody thinks about the water over trash until it's done, right? You know? Exactly.
Um, so, so with that being said, uh, is there any further, um, questions or comments from council? All right, seeing that there's none, is there a motion to approve?
Sure do.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that Agenda Item Number Twelve has passed. All right, thank you, Senator. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Thirteen, which is consideration of a motion to approve a water contract for the fiscal year twenty nineteen servicing projects, Sykes Brothers Incorporated, in the amount of nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, six hundred, ten thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty cent, with approvals staying up to the budget amount of one billion and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents for additional work based on contractors' unit, unit prices. Funding is provided by T-S clause, distributed by revenues and Department, Georgia Department of Transportation, L M I G funds. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff solicited sealed bids for our block twenty nineteen resurfacing project and we received four bids. Um, this work included the contract, uh, includes asphalt resurfacing approximately six point one eight miles of asphalt milling as well as reinstallation of roadway striping. Uh, the low bidder, Sykes Brothers, who needs requirements for bid package, is submitted acceptable bond. Assistant African mensal wording this contract, Sykes Brothers, in the amount nine hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, sixty cent, and requests approvals to the up to the total budget amount, which includes L M I G funds of one billion and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. This project is paid for from twenty nineteen L M I G funds, uh, which is where the random number comes from, the three hundred thousand, uh, three hundred, five hundred, three hundred thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And of course, the remainder comes from our twenty eighteen T-S clause fund. The allowance for seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Any questions?
All right, council, are there any questions?
What's L M I G again?
Local maintenance improvement, Mayor?
Thank you.
They replaced the lars to resurfacing. This state better, Mayor, it's not exactly the same.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't remember whether it was. Wow, that's a million bucks.
Yeah.
Been a long time since we seen a million bucks go to roads.
This is our, this is our first, our highest award resurfacing contract we've ever issued. And this name says a million dollars next to the T-S clause.
How many miles of road?
Six. Just over six miles.
Jason, we're six miles.
Million dollars.
And we got a hundred and twenty-four miles of road, twenty-two?
Where do, where do citizens see this resurfacing schedule for this project?
We'll have that, um, on our Department Facebook page and on our website to interact with projects.
City website.
That's right, there's a public works engineering.
I just want to make sure everybody has said it, because if you lost questions about what is it, when, when my street?
That's right.
So, I want everybody to understand, say that again, please, for everybody.
So, we'll have that on the Public Works Engineering Facebook page, um, as soon as we get this board and get things rolling. And we'll also have it on the city website under Public Works Engineering Department, interacting projects.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Sure do.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it show that Agenda Item Number Thirteen has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Thirteen, which is consideration of a motion to set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty budget as May seventh, twenty nineteen, same day if you will.
Sir, City West Finance Director, in accordance with state law, the city is required to hold a public hearing at least one making advance of its adoption. We are intending to adopt the budget, fiscal year twenty twenty budget on May twenty-first, so this will bring us into compliance by having the meeting on May seventh.
All right, council, any questions? Seeing that there, that there are none, are there, um, is there a motion to approve?
Sure do.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I would thank you for Agenda Item Thirteen, as it has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Fifteen, which is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash eleven, a resolution to adopt the second amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty budget for each fund of the City of Statesboro, Georgia, appropriate in a shown in each buzzer as, budget as expenditures and expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations and prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding appropriate.
Um, yes, sir, also, State Hall, we are required to amend our budget. Uh, we have a few, this is our second budget amendment for fiscal year twenty nineteen. And the funds being affected is the General Fund, the U S Department Justice Grant Fund, the Statesboro Fire Service Fund, and the two thousand and seven S W A S Fund.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve? Somebody any questions by council? All right, seeing that there's none, is there a motion?
Sure do.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor to approve?
Aye.
All right, we will now touch on the Item Sixteen, which is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, a resolution to adopt third amendment to the sixth year capital improvements program for the fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen, through twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four for the City of Statesboro.
Um, we have two C I P projects that we might add to our, um, six-year, our six-year C I P. Um, and that is at Inspector Pickup Trucks in the Fire Department and the work to the fire training facility.
All right, is there, are there any questions by council? Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to approve?
Sure do.
Is there a second?
Please take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move down to Agenda Item Seventeen, which is consideration of a motion to request the city attorney to draft a TAP ordinance or a finance estimate, which will outline the transparent process for naming discussed in the adopted committee members of the City of Statesboro, committees, conditions, authority boards. Um, Kane?
Mayor Council, uh, this was requested by councilman, uh, Boy and the Duke. Uh, what, what is being requested is, is an over, is an overlaying ordinance that would, um, that would outline the process for the appointment of members, not just to the chapter two authorities, boards, and commissions, but also to any, um, to any sort of board that is a result of an I G A with another government entity or anyone's with private partnerships such as, um, the Blue Creek Oversight Committee. So, this would apply to appointments also with downtown TAD Advisory Committee and all that. So, the idea would be that, that since these are private citizens that are being considered for appointment for these, that, that those sorts of dis-